Can you call the roll to establish for please?
This is Fodor, present. Mr. Kelly?
Present.
To Coth?
Here.
Mr. Matt?
Here.
Ms. Paul Strini? Gibson? Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Please rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, white nation, under God, indivisible, with the great majesty of our God.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Lyons. Does anyone sign up to speak?
No one signed up to speak or has said.
All right, before you, you have the meeting minutes from April 3rd, 2025.
In case you didn't notice, I'll try to recall the three of us joining us.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I was quiet.
Um, April 3rd, 2025, please review them at this time. Are there any changes to the minutes?
None.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Would you have a distinction?
I wasn't here to tell you if that's what happened.
I appreciate it.
Don't find me who we are.
Uh, Mr. Casselli, there's no law that says you can't vote if you weren't present, correct?
Absolutely no law that says you can't vote if you're present. And good evening.
Oh, hi.
Thank you. Welcome. Yes.
Um, so tonight we have a couple of appointments. Um, I apologize in advance, uh, or I shouldn't say in advance, but I apologize to the board for, I know the agenda was finalized and sent out to the, uh, board, and then I changed it. And so I don't like doing that, but I felt that this was important because, uh, we did have a resignation on the BDC. Uh, our chair, Liz Martin, who gave us a few years of service resigned due to some conflicts that she had in, uh, with some classes she was taking. So, uh, we convinced David Pizzolato, who is the, uh, one of the founding members of, uh, the Business Development Commission, uh, to step up and be chair. And so we had asked him when Mr. Krajewski stepped away, and he, uh, couldn't do the work, his terms, and, uh, now he says that he's got a different role, and he's happy to do it. So, um, he couldn't be here tonight because of scheduling conflicts, but I'm, uh, I'm confident that, um, in his ability and his, his dedication to serve, considering he's been on the Business Development Commission since it's been founded. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of David Pizzolato, um, as chair through his term, uh, that which ends in May of 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
There's no information at all.
He's already, he's already on, he's already on the BDC. He should step it up from chair.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Next, uh, if you want to step up to the podium again. Um, we've had an opening on the BDC for a little while. Um, tonight I present Mr. Christopher Garcia for appointment to the BDC, and he, he, uh, doesn't know what he's getting himself into, but he's very willing. Um, I, I, and I've known him for a few years. He's very, um, business-centric, business-focused, and he's an all-around great guy. And I present him tonight for you guys to ask any questions you have to him, uh, before we, I entertain a motion to appoint him to the BDC. Does anyone have any questions? You want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Um, so, uh, full-time, I work full-time at the Chamberlain Group. You guys might have heard of Liftmaster Chamberlain. Chances are, you probably have one of our garage openers in your garages now. Uh, so that's what I do. I manage pricing for the Chamberlain Group separately. I'm a doctoral student. Uh, business administration is what my studies are, but my research interests are in consumer neuroscience, which is basically a fancy way of saying marketing. Um, and then I like to volunteer. I'm working on a triathlon, Ironman, all that kind of good stuff. So I like to overachieve. That's a little bit about me.
Mr. Krajewski did a Chamberlain triathlon, so you're gonna have to use that. Kind of a disco.
Well, we're looking, we'll, we'll talk after. Well, we're looking forward to having you, and I really appreciate you giving up a few minutes of your time to come and talk to the board. So, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, Christopher Garcia to the Business Development Commission through May of 26.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, welcome. That's it.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, we'll have more reach out. We'll have, we'll reach out with, uh, we'll give you a bill of Gmail and that kind of stuff, and he'll, he'll give you the crash course on what, uh, FOIA is, and open meetings, act compliance, and all of that good stuff, and he'll tell you when the first meeting is.
Sounds good.
May...
Second Monday.
Fourteenth. May fourteenth, right here.
Okay.
Right here.
Same bad channel.
Same bad time. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of this, or you can split. It's up to you.
I'll stick around a little bit.
All right.
See what I'm getting myself into.
Awesome. It's too late. You can't hold right now.
You could get volunteer for the door.
All right, uh, with that, uh, we do have a public hearing tonight, so I'll need to entertain a motion to go into the public hearing for the fiscal budget for year 25, 26. Thank you. And because it's a public hearing, we're gonna have to have a voice vote. So Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Fodor? Aye. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Piss?
And I get to bang the, bang the gavel again. Okay, we're in the public hearings. Welcome to everybody coming to the public hearing to hear about the, uh, 2025, 26 budget. Tonight we have Ms. Lyons with a riveting presentation, hopefully with my favorite graphic.
Very short, promise.
Okay.
Um, so I want to assure you that, um, all of the statutory requirements have been met with respect to the bubble, the budget. Um, the public hearing was published in the newspaper. Um, we have, uh, had the budget available for public inspection, both on the village's website and here at Village Hall. And I have a very short presentation, um, to just go over some of the initiatives that are included in the budget and entertain any questions if you have it. Um, first of all, I want to remind you again, as we hammer home both to the, uh, Budget Committee and the, uh, the Village Board, that the village's mission is to deliver village services in an efficient, equitable, and customer-driven manner with excellence, sustainability, and transparency. The FY26 budget reflects a conservative approach to fund operations and capital projects with consideration for the economically volatile environment that we're experiencing at this time. Um, with respect to the general fund, we have included purchases of a new snowplow, a fork truck and bucket truck, purchase of two new squad cars, and a speed monitoring trailer. Safe routes to school is, um, in the budget this year again, and also the stormwater remediation project at Park and Rin. Um, and then probably the biggest initiative that we've taken on in, um, my, uh, 13-plus year, 10-year here, is the public works facility. With respect to personnel, um, we have accounted for, uh, the transition, um, in our village manager, um, in the police department. Um, as you know, we have two recruits at the academy right now. Um, we do have one open position that, um, is, uh, budgeted for in the, in these budgets, and we have added a part-time clerk in that area. In the streets department, uh, we have added, added one person, as well as in the utility department, we're looking for an experienced sewer operator. Um, the special census is probably the biggest question in the budget at this point. Um, this would increase both our income, um, and personal property replacement taxes and motor fuel tax, based on the fact that these are, um, state shared revenues that are allocated on a per capita basis. And, um, the budget does include the special census actually getting done, um, in fiscal year 26. So again, it's a bit of a question since that is currently on hold. With respect to, uh, capital projects, special, special revenue funds, and again, a bit of general funds, um, I wanted to tell you that we continue to support our residential and business community through contributions or grants to the Coon Creek Country, um, Days Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Historical Site, as well as the Sun, Sudden Fund Car Show. Paving projects this year will include portions of Jake Lane, Jackson, North State Street, and Highland Avenue. And we will be constructing an additional early warning siren, um, in Prairie Ridge North at the drinking water treatment plant that services both wells 10 and 13. Um, with respect to the enterprise funds, um, in the water division, we are looking at valve replacement, hydrant replacement, um, continuing, um, our initiative to provide surge protection to our very valuable assets. Um, we will be replacing the control valve and meter at the drinking water treatment plant, um, on Harmony Road, um, as well as continuing the well 13 pump rehab and drinking water treatment plant, um, planned for the site at Tam's Farm. And then we will also continue with our lead service line replacement engineering and planning for, for those replacements. In the sewer area, um, I have the Mount Tim retaining wall on there, and you'll wonder what Mount Tim is. Mount Tim is the building that's at the far west side of the property. It's actually up on a hill, so we call it Mount Tim. Tim, I believe, was, not our Tim Paulson, um, but a different engineer that assisted in the engineering of the, um, one of the, uh, expansions to the wastewater treatment plant.
That's pretty depressing for Mr. Paulson.
Also depressing to the other Tim. You could name something after him. We don't even know who he is.
Right. Um, Mark would be able to tell you. I, I, I might be, I might be wrong. Um, and then reconfiguration of the clearifier splitter box, manhole rehab, which is an ongoing, um, capital improvement project for the village. And then engineering will start on the Higgins and McDonald's list stations that are, um, for, uh, in the capital budget for planned replacements. And then additional surge protection devices to our sewer assets. So that's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I would be happy to entertain them.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lyons, and thank you, uh, staff, for this, uh, undergoing this arduous process that we have to do every year. Do you guys come through it, um, every year with flying colors? And I appreciate everybody's collaboration and teamwork to try to get it done, and so that we all always comply with the state deadlines and that kind of stuff. And thank you to the Budget Committee for all of their hard work through this process. Um, Mr. Kelly, you are the Budget Chair. Do you have anything you'd like to add for the public hearing?
Uh, no, I just, I know it was in the notes of the, I believe it was in the notes sent. Just this, the budget was discussed with the board at the last meeting, I believe?
Yes.
Um, I know we went through a couple of Budget Committee hearings. Again, thank you, as President Reed said, to the staff for walking us through those, and to all the board members that attended. What are the differences and changes between last board meeting and tonight to highlight those?
Yes. Um, so the changes including, uh, they include adjustment to the cost of the community sign and, uh, the government partic, other government participation that will be assisting the village in, um, paying for that. Um, we confirmed the Historical Society funding, as well as added the Sudden Fund, um, Car Show, uh, grant. Um, I have updated the general fund transfer, um, from public use and eliminated the multi, mul, motor fuel tax transfer. Um, let's see. We added $1,100 in the police department for additional software that's being required. And, um, we swapped out, um, painting of the police department facility for the drone that they're very excited to add to their list of assets.
Thank you.
Yep.
So anyone, uh, any of the board have questions for the public hearing?
I just wanted to point out, um, one thing just for the public. Um, it is under the, uh, general fund, uh, administration, and just pointing out that, um, I guess it's page six of 481 is what it says. Um, the village beautification fund has been cut in half so that it's going to be $50,000 instead of $100,000 that it has been in the past. So I would, and you know this is my soapbox anyway, but I would hope that we can amend then the processes, um, and the application then for the beautification committee, because otherwise potentially we will only be able to help one person if it comes in with a $48,000, um, request of 75% of what they've, what they've submitted to us. So I just wanted to point that out and just make that comment.
Okay. Any other business for the public hearing? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and go back into open session.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Motion Piss Zero.
Okay, we are back out of the public hearing, and we are now into open session. Uh, I will hand the meeting over like I normally do to Mr. Edges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget. Uh, this is on page nine, and if you have questions, Ms. Lyons is right here.
Does anyone have any questions about the budget in open session? I will entertain an ordinance approving the fiscal year 25, 26 budget.
Go. Second.
Questions, comments? Uh, Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion Piss Six Zero.
We need to get new backup pencils. It may be next year's budget.
Thank you. With that, we would ask for a motion to accept the police pension municipal compliance report. This is on page 63 of your packet.
This is the, um, compliance report for the police pension board you guys have met.
Yes, the, the pension board finally, um, came to an agreeable date. Uh, they met on, uh, Friday, April 4th, Friday at 5:00 PM.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's how dedicated they are.
They are. Very dedicated, that group.
Does anyone have any questions about the compliance report? I'll entertain a motion to accept the police pension municipal compliance report.
Move. Second. Questions, comments?
Uh, Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Motion Piss Six Zero.
Mr. Edges, can I take this one?
You certainly may.
So, um, we had our annual town meeting last week, uh, at the township where every township resident, uh, had an opportunity to be involved with how government works, and, and we also had an opportunity to get an update from the fire district, library district, park district, and, uh, other government, and the township about, uh, um, how they're operating and what their initiatives are for the next year. Um, and so one of the things that they passed at that meeting was a resolution opposing the consolidation of townships into county government. There's a couple of state legislative bills that are being presented to consolidate with the aim of consolidating townships into county government, because they don't think that townships are, uh, provide a useful service to the community. It's just another layer, layer of government. Um, I saw it as an opportunity to stand with our township as they provide all kinds of different services to our residents, specifically toward our senior citizens, which no one else in our community or region is really caring for as closely or as intimately as our township does. And so I just thought that it would be, uh, worthwhile for us to pass a kind of non-binding resolution with similar language, um, supporting our Hampshire Township because of the services they provide our community. Does anyone have any questions?
I have some concern just about the way that it's written.
Sure.
Because as you go through it, we, we use the electors of, and then we talk about the village does this or, and then a corporate authorities, and it changes throughout the whole thing. And so that's one concern. And who are the electors? Because we're speaking for all of them, and we're just the village
Correct.
of Hampshire, not the township.
We're just doing this in solidarity of them, and it's their, it's their resolution that we cleaned up a little bit, tried to make it our, ours, and in, again, us as residents of Hampshire Township, because we are residents of Hampshire Township, therefore we are representing the electors of, which would be us. And so, I mean, if you don't like the language, I suppose we could spend a lot of money and have the lawyer clean it up. But again, it's a non-binding resolution to, uh, support the Hampshire Township.
Where is this legislation?
It's a House Bill, uh, Senate Bill 2504, Senate Bill 2217, and House Bill 2515.
These bills have been floated in Springfield for decades.
Correct.
Decades.
So.
Something new.
Again, it's a non-binding thing. I just thought it would be an opportunity for us to stand with the township because they provide a ton of services that we don't even begin to have the means to support for our residents, and if it goes to the county, you know that they don't have the resources either. At least that's my thinking. Does anyone else have, have trouble with the language, or you would prefer that we send this to the lawyer? If not, I'll entertain a motion approving the resolution.
I'll, I'll approve. I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or comments? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion Piss Zero.
Thank you for your indulgence this evening. Mr. Edges, it's back to you.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance amending Section 14-2-6 of the Hampshire Municipal Code Regarding Fire Protection Contribution Fees, this on page 77 of your packet, and will give you a brief summary.
Um, if you recall, at the last village board meeting, um, the village board adopted the 2025 Building Comfort Fee Schedule, which amended the, we call contribution fees in the code, essentially impact fees for the fire district. The fire district requested that they be increased because they haven't been increased since 2008 or 2009, and that was approved by the village board. We, we're coming back to amend the code so we don't have to do this every year. So the language is changed from specific fees to scaling that the village board will set fees from time to time. Um, so that's just the gist of this amendment, so we don't have to do a tech limit every year, uh, if we need to change the fee structure, the change of fees. So it'll come back every year as part of the building permit fee schedule for you.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Khan?
I mean, just for transparency's sake, though, no matter what we set these at, all the current development agreements already have the fees set what they are, correct? That, that if we raise a fee, it's not like one of the developments that are currently being built all of a sudden pays more per household. They're already set in the development agreement.
Prairie Ridge North Development Agreement and the Oakstead Development Agreement, the impact fees and transition fees are set.
Right.
Um, so this will be for like a one, one-off house builder or a new development that comes into the village.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion approving, uh, ordinance amending Section 14-2-6 of the Municipal Code Regarding Fire Protection Contribution Fees.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments? Can you, uh, take the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Paul?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Motion Piss Six Zero.
Uh, with that, the next two items are bracketed, something that I've been working on for almost a year now. And, uh, before that, um, the straw from Park District was working on it for several months before then. Um, I would ask your consideration of an ordinance to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Hampshire Township, Park District, uh, Hampshire Township, Ellicott Memorial Library District, and the Hampshire Fire Protection District for the purchase and operation and maintenance of a community sign at Hempick Park. Uh, this on page 85 of your packet. You have an agenda supplement from me explaining how this will be financed. Um, originally it was for this year, but now, um, as Ms. Lyons mentioned, she hasn't enough next year's budget. The expenditure will be for $32,000, $100, excuse me, $100. Then will be reimbursed for $12,000 of that by the other agencies, and the village will end up spending $20,000. Uh, the location we've been working on for quite a long time, it will be up at Hempick Park. So it's 72, get all the traffic on 72. Uh, the Park District has agreed to do most of the posting. There, there's an app that comes with it. Software's really, really, uh, quite, um, intelligent. And, uh, so they'll be doing, posting the announcements. This will just be for the five agencies that are participating initially for our announcements. It won't be used by any private sector or any, the Chamber of Commerce. There's no plan at this point to charge for advertising or anything. This will just be for community announcements for these five government agencies. And there is, there is, um, well, the first thing is the intergovernmental agreement, and then we'll talk about the actual costs of sign and the bidding.
So if you remember, we used to have, uh, prior to the construction of, uh, 72 and State, there was a community message board that was operated by the Chamber of Commerce, and it was a manual sign. And so, um, one of the things that is something that this board and previous boards have always talked about is having an electronic sign somewhere that could be easily, easily manageable by someone, right? The thought process was is that the village staff would manage the sign. That's what it was in its infancy. Right now, with the advent of technology and the way that it is, we can put up a sign and give different people access to it to kind of share the workload, if you will. And so rather than, and what we've, what we've found in talking with these other agencies is, and what we've seen in other communities is everybody has their own sign all over town, and so, and depending on where your, um, organization is, that's where the messaging is. And so what we've worked really hard to do together with this board's help is to try to kind of, uh, put all of the messaging in one place so that our residents don't get confused. This, uh, where, you know, whether it's a park district event, whether it's a library event, whether it's a village deal or something like that. So that's where the, the impetus for the, uh, intergovernmental agreement came and trying to work with everybody. And the theory would be if we can prove that this works, if there's other signs that need to go up in the future, we would all be partnered in that, and, um, and then, again, have singular places throughout the community that people could go for information. So that's kind, that's kind of where this all came.
You do have a graphic in your, in your packet. Uh, the graphic is not precise, but it's, is very representative. Uh, the logos will be fine tuned a little bit, but the village will have the primary masthead at the top. It'll be the village logo, and then the other logos will be smaller. Uh, but that, that'll have to come through the initial proof that each one of the organizations will. Then we're gonna, two of the other, um, all, I, I believe all four of the boards will vote this month. Uh, the, the township may, maybe early May, on their agreement.
Does anyone have any questions about the intergovernmental agreement or the signs? Since they are bracketed, we can have this conversation in general, and we'll take two different voice votes.
In this, uh, agreement, is it listed that, you know, how many, uh, how long each entity gets it? Like we get it three months, they get it two months?
Actually, but everybody will be posting at the same time. They'll just be rotating messages. And that's something that'll be worked out. If you notice, we added in there an executive committee that's a representative from each one of the organizations. They'll kind of set the rules because we can't anticipate tonight everything that'll come up for that agreement.
I do, kind of in line with what trustee Coth was saying. I just have a question on, on the discussions that had happened, because I like that we're all working together as a community, but there's not equal share in the cost of this, and then the maintenance and the care is all on the village. So why, why does everyone have equal access and not have to cover an equal amount of whatever the cost?
First of all, we're, we're, we're paying the majority of the funds.
Absolutely.
And we were gonna pay it all until the mayor suggested that we try and get, um, the other organization to participate. And so, and, and soliciting their participation, I asked them to participate financially. The fire department, for example, couldn't afford to contribute at all, uh, so they're not in at all. Uh, but the other, the other organizations had limited funds available, so I tried to spread it around and reduce it to a number that $20,000 that I thought was affordable. Um, there's really no maintenance to be done, but the village should be responsible for that. We'll have to pay the utility bill, which will be minor, I think. Uh, we're working with Khan and now to get the, uh, meter at, added and service set up up there. Uh, they bring them, they bring the power to us. We just have to cook the meter there, and all of that will be part of the cost of the sign. Um, so the installation and everything is part of the paperwork. Now, the, the Park District, because we expect, they have a lot more activities than anybody else. I believe the Park District probably uses it more than anybody else, so they've agreed to ma, to manage the sign. And if, if we want, for example, we don't have anybody in our staff that does that for, you know, as a job. So we'll, we'll send messages to them initially probably and say, please post our message in later. Uh, but those are all things that the executive committee have kind of worked out to fine-tune them on.
And just in respect to the Fire Protection District, they are in here and they are contributing.
Yeah, I mean, I put $100 in there. He hasn't even agreed to pay that, frankly. I just put something poking it.
Okay. I just don't want to make it seem like they're a part of the committee and didn't pay.
The, the whole, the whole goal is, is we really wanted, we really wanted the buy-in from all of the other bodies,
because again, it's confusing as all get out from our resident, from, from the resident's perspective of where do I go to find what? And so if we start the intergovernmental agreement, again, we use the fire department as an example, not shaming them, right? But they don't have the money in the budget to do it now, so, but they want, but to exclude them solely on the fact that they didn't have the money at the time, that, that, that almost sets a precedent for anything going forward. And so it's a matter of trying to get, get everybody all on the same page and working together. Maybe the next sign comes along and somebody else says, hey, I really want to put a sign, and they come to the village and say, well, that's great, but we don't have a, we don't have the money to donate to that this time, or not donate, but to participate in it this time, and then maybe then... we don't have the money to donate to that this time, or not donate, but to participate in it this time. And then maybe then, maybe we get to be the fire department in that route, you know?
Because to be fair, this is a sign for the village. I mean, I think it's our um, the village should put the sign up.
Well, we've been talking about doing it on our own anyway.
Yes.
Which doesn't require an intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah.
I was just looking at the fact that you have the park district making the discretion of what would be timely and posted on there. And might, and if needed, that may go to the executive committee to resolve any schedule conflicts. So it's there, I'm, I'm okay with us partnering with the, with the other agencies. It was just simply a question of usually intergovernmental agreements are equal across, and this is not. And so that
Right.
that's what I was.
Well, I would think, and I don't know what it may be, the context of the message. I would think village business, business would trump
Not in that.
Park district activity.
Not in this.
You know, we won't have any problem getting our messages on board. We have four or five meetings a month. That's all we really have to promote. We have one especially that per year, which is a parade. So the village doesn't have a lot to promote. It's all the other organizations.
Right. And if there's an emergency, the police department would take control of the sign for national emergency purposes anyway. So, so if that, that, that's in our authority as the village of to take over signs and that kind of stuff as far as gas go, like even restricting the sale of gas and alcohol.
Okay.
So I mean, like I, there are provisions that are within, that are provisions that are within our authority as the village that are not specifically referenced in this that we, if we need that there's an incident in town and we take control of our sign because we'll have the login for it. Park district's not going to be mad at us for it.
No, I understand. No.
I'm okay with it as long as the village has the right to get on that sign and do something when they want to and not have to go through the park district. I'm okay with it that way. But if we have to go through the park district to get anything on there.
Um, we don't have to, but we might choose to. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
All right.
I think from.
Well, I mean, if there's something that needs to be posted after hours, the park district's not going to do it. So we would have.
So we probably wouldn't either. We wouldn't have anybody here either, unless it's a police emergency. This, this really isn't designed for police emergencies. We're not going to be putting up there that, you know, there's a road block or something. I had. No, I get that. It's a community. You guys will.
Can I, can I interrupt? This trustee Fodor's been trying to say something. They'll go out here.
Um, good. I was just gonna say, you know, respectfully, we do have a mechanism available to us if we find later on that, you know, things aren't working out in the sharing agreement. We do have a PR that could involve, you know, sit down and go over this and revise things and decide that, hey, this is not what we were expecting. How are we going to resolve this issue? So we do have that mechanism. We could use that. Um, that's not something that I would think needs to be spelled out in this agreement. I'm questioning that.
I agree.
Okay.
I, 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 I agree with what you're saying. I mean, there are, there are mechanisms for any one of these concerns, but I, for what the overarching thing is, what I'm hearing is, is that there's not a a level of trust that I think that there should be. Staff worked out this agreement. Staff, you know, is using, for lack of a terminology, we're using the park district to our advantage in this is because we don't have the ability to post stuff on a regular basis. They offered to do it. And.
Sorry, sorry. I just want to correct. My thing had nothing to do with trusting other agencies. Mine had to was simply a question that there wasn't equal share of cost across the agencies.
Fair enough.
I never said anything about trust.
Thank you.
To your point, trustee Kelly, I guess my second comment was going to be if I'm understanding it correctly, even though the park district may not be chipping in financially as much, it does cost us money to have staff operate this. So they are contributing labor.
That was their major contribution.
Okay.
They're also the second highest contributing to it.
Right. But I mean, that kind of
Yeah.
brings it up a little bit more.
I did want to jump in kind of along with trustee Kelly. Excuse me, because it was real, it was really concerning. Um, so breaking it down, the village is paying sixty three percent of the costs of the purchase of the sign. The park district is sixteen percent. The library is eleven percent. The township is eleven and fire protection point zero zero three, but I understand that was just to have an exchange of the money. Um, that's, that's a lot. There's nothing in here really that says that we can decide we don't want to do this anymore and stop it because the sign is our sign. So it's, it's ours as like all the parties here, but yet sixty three percent of the cost is ours to purchase it. Um, we're also paying the electricity, all repairs, and the replacement of the entire sign should there be a problem and recovering the insurance. That's a lot. So it's, it's not really evened out at all. And just to say, if the village decides we no longer want to keep the sign or we want to give it to someone to say we don't want to be a part of anymore, there's nothing in here unless council, you can point out to me where that is.
Your, your percentages, I believe, are correct. I do, if we could all draw our attention to page eighty seven and one fifty one. That's eight, seven of one, five, one, page two of the agreement. And reading from paragraph two on said page and ultimate, always want to use that in a word, in a board meeting, the second to last sentence. Any party may terminate this agreement at any time during the term by providing the other parties not less than thirty calendar days written notice of such termination. So if we did believe that this wasn't in our best interest, we always want to say this too, we are in the catbird seat. Like we can say, everybody's out, it's our sign now. Now we're going to go and do it our way. So in a way, I think we have the most leverage on this. And obviously, numbers are numbers. They are hard and fast. It's not a social science, it's a hard science. We do pay the most. The park district does contribute labor in lieu of an additional payment, but we do have some rights to just end it and tell everybody, go, go get your own sign. I mean, it is what it is. Um, the president is correct that in the event of a state of emergency, that there are powers that go on there with reverse signage to ensure that I'll be cheeky, zombies or aliens, we know where to go hide from them. And it's, we do have some certain powers in the event of an emergency. So I do, your points are well taken. Everyone's points are well taken. But we do have the ability to terminate it if we don't think it's the right thing to do. We would just send a written notice and make sure that that happens. Um, I, and I agree that there's oftentimes an equitable contribution in all these annex, or all these intergovernmental agreements, but I've also seen them where one party picked up a little bit more of the slack one way or the other. It was just my experience. So I don't know if that answers your question. I do think that there is a way out, um, from that language. Uh, but it's obviously the boards will on how they want to proceed with emergency.
Let me just address one of your other concerns, uh, Ms. Powell Strini. Um, it got really complicated if we, if we shared the ownership. So that's why the village will own the sign. It'll be our asset. They're just contributing to pay for it. That's why we're maintaining it. That's why if there's an insurance claim, we don't want to have to fight with three or four different insurance companies. So, and, and they, there's really no maintenance cost to it.
Is it saying here that we're the owners of the sign?
We will be. We're buying the sign. The next item you'll be doing is authorize us to purchase the sign. Yes.
Okay.
We've done public bids for the sign. It's all independent.
Okay, yeah, I saw all that stuff, but the ownership is because everyone's.
We will be the owners of the sign. It'll be on our, one of our assets. They will just be using our sign. And if we were to give them thirty days notice, we they don't have any use of the sign and we just keep their money. I mean, if you want to talk about trust, they're trusting us.
Yeah. Okay. I, I mean, and it's, it's not that I don't trust any other governments. It's just a matter of if, if we're putting forth the money and we're responsible for replacing the whole thing. If it should have to be replaced, then the entire amount is, is back on the village. And then there's really nothing required of any of the other ones to help.
There would be no requirement of the village even replace it. I mean, if it got damaged by insurance, then we'd have an insurance claim, some sort of accident. But when it fails in twenty years, it'll be up to the village to decide what we want to do, what we want to do.
I think, I think it's our responsibility as a village to maintain this sign. Any, anything that goes on that sign. Uh, park district township wise, advertising this event downtown is bringing tax dollars into the village. So essentially we're benefiting from everything that goes on that side. So I think it's our responsibility as a village to maintain that sign.
I, I, I agree. I totally agree with that. And I think the park district is going to do great at managing it. I'm sure staff is elated. They don't have to manage it here. Uh, they have enough on their plate. And, you know, the park district does have more activities than, than most do. So.
But that sign will benefit every taxpayer in this village.
Absolutely.
So I think it is a comfort for us and the village to pay for and maintain it.
I just had a question. Are businesses going to be included in putting information for businesses on the site or is activity, the events and?
Initially, initially, no, it'd be just these five organizations. At some point, if, if there's space, if there's time, if there's the ability, if there's software to do it, we could theoretically allow for advertising, but that's not planned right.
Yeah. I mean, the, the next, the next logical step in the conversation would be engaging with the chamber after this is up and going. For community wide events and stuff like that, not, not necessarily advertising for double R dogs respectfully, he's watching, you know, that they have a hot dog special or something of that nature. It's a community message board and that stamp, the, the whole idea. Right now, the Chamber of Commerce is not a government body. That's why we keep, we didn't do a government, intergovernmental agreement. But if there comes a time, that's what that executive board is, is comprised to do. That would be something that they would be able to say, hey, maybe we should open it up to chamber events. What do you guys think? And if there's costs associated with it or whatever, that would be dictated and then it would have to be approved. So.
No, I, I, I think that I agree with the advertisement. I'd be leery of like business advertising, but like the scouts or the Lions Club or the, the Knights of Columbus or other organizations around town. The Chamber, stuff like that. Um, I mean, they can't be in an intergovernmental agreement, but I would assume that the five member body would be like, yeah, of course we're going to do that. It's a community event.
That's, that's kind of how we handle the village newsletter in a much more informal basis. If we have space, all those organizations give us something almost every issue, but we don't always have space.
Yeah, I don't think there would be a lack of updates to put on that side.
And respectfully, I think that this is one of the things that we had talked about, you know, four years ago. But if we need multiple routes to get our messages to people. And, you know, respectfully, I love the newsletter, but it only comes, you know, six times a year. So we're not going to see things as frequently as we need to. And this is eliminated.
I want to think this, if I remember correctly, this is a lot cheaper, even if we were to pay a hundred percent. This is way cheaper than with the original estimates of a sign in that area.
Yeah, it was somehow upwards of a hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking. That's why I was like, this is crazy.
They do a really nice job. There's, there's sixty thousand dollars with the brickwork on that one though.
Well, they have a different tax.
Yeah.
Simple landscaping around.
Who's finding that's introducing the sign?
I got it.
Yeah.
New sign they do.
Yes, they do. They're coming soon, a sign.
We, we, we figured that because of the topology of the land, just so you guys know how the design came to be, just because of the topology of the land and where it's going. Um, we figured that the sign being up on posts and doing greenery around the bottom, because we're, it's kind of low down at the bottom. And we figured that if we did any type of fancy brickwork or attempted to be like Huntley, it would be underwater most of the time if it rains. So or snow or that kind of thing. So that's why we decided to go with the greenery. And we're not hunting, so.
I do have one question about the brightness of this. It is going to fit within our limitations for night.
We have to comply with our own zone.
Yes, okay. And it's not going to be blinding people with bright white things at night, correct?
It's designed to be on a roadside, so it's not going to.
So it's the one in Huntley at Main Street. And I love the flags, but it's really hard to be at that traffic light.
We, we will comply. And it's an electronic message board that has brightness control. And so if there's an issue, we will adjust it because we don't want to make anybody.
Or, you know, cause accidents as the
On purpose.
major intersection means now.
Right.
When is this the projected time base for this to be in?
Well, place the order tomorrow. Um, there's some of the materials he had to order because of, uh, prices going up, care of concerns, because he quoted this about three weeks, about almost a month ago now. Uh, but his price, his price had to be guaranteed until, let's say, May twelfth. But anyway, uh, it'll probably be sixty days before it's sold. We, first, we have to get comment out. We haven't got a confirmation. We, we don't have a date for the power to be dropped yet. Uh, we had to have that done once before, once we have a drop before.
So the sign over on, uh, Raoul.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
But that's, that was totally different.
And I've been, I've been out here with comment twice at least, just to look for where the sign is going to drop from. So I guess we've been working on it that long. But we don't have a commitment from them yet. Laura's working on that too.
Nick, if you're watching, we're coming for you. Nick's our comment rep. As soon as we have this going, we're going to be knocking on his door saying, come on, Nick, let's go.
Well, I told him once the signs up, then he ought to get power to them.
Any other questions about the agreement or the sign?
I just want to point out, because you had said two meetings a month, et cetera, what we would be using it for. Um, I would still like to say, like the BDC, you know, that's meeting and planning and zoning. I mean, it also kind of alerts the community of the different things that
Yeah, those are the areas.
That's part of that. Okay.
We'll be reminding people when their water bills do. Oh, okay. We got a lot of stuff.
They've been brainstorming about the fact that we have a voice rather than putting it on social media.
Yeah.
Because people can't comment on our sign like they can on social. So so because this is bracketed, um, and we had the discussion about the, this project as a whole, we do need to approve the IGA. And then we need to approve the, uh, actual purchase. And we will need to do voice vote temple. So.
I'm motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Do we need a I guess this would, no, this is a question for the next one. Okay.
Uh, Ms. Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Ms. Fodor? Hi, Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coe.
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Powell Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
This six zero.
Okay, next we have an actual, um, uh, the actual purchase of the sign. So I will accept, I, I entertain a motion to accept a little bit of thirty two thousand ninety five dollars from Sign-A-Round ineligible for a community sign to be installed at Hempick Park.
No.
Now, Mr., uh, questions or comments? I know you have.
No, I, I confused voice vote with roll call vote. Okay. I thought since we were spending money, we would need a roll call vote.
Mr. Robinson, you're correct. Yeah.
We are going to take a voice vote, right?
Sorry. Voice vote is a, is it all call vote? A roll call is what can.
Can you do a voice?
See, I'll pay the attention.
Can you do a voice roll call vote, please, Ms. Clerk?
Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Powell Strini?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
And Ms. Fodor? Hi. Motion pass six zero.
I would just like to thank you guys for that. This has been something that we've been working on for a long time. We got some grants for it. And then the grants we had to use other places. Now we're not sure we're going to get the grants at all. And so I, I just, I really appreciate you guys sticking through, uh, this with me and, and getting this done for our community. It's huge.
Thank you.
All right.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we also, we have three more bracketed items. There are three SSAs, uh, being created, backup SSAs, our favorite topic. Um, with that, I would ask your consideration of an ordinance proposing an establishment of a special service area number thirty two for the Old Dominion project. And set a public hearing date for June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Uh, there's also an ordinance proposing an establish a special service area number thirty three uh, for the Road Ranger McDonald's project to set a public hearing date for June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. And finally, an ordinance proposing an, an establishment of a special service area number thirty four for the Arrowhead Business Park project and set a public hearing date for June twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. If you have any questions, Mr. Khan, we'd be happy to answer them. This is some cleanup work on developments that never had SSAs created, but need those required. These, these required, these were done by Mr. Schuster, some of the last work he's doing for the village.
I do have a question, because some of these are old developments.
Mm-hmm.
Are they grandfathered?
You can clarify your question. The grandfathered need to.
Were they developed prior to Kane County Storm Order Ordinance that requires the village to pass the backup SSAs? So they should have been done back when they were developed.
Yes. A lot of these, um, predate, I think, all of us in this room. Right?
Uh, well, that one does. Yeah.
Well, they're both.
Yeah, Road Ranger McDonald's one predates me, I know for sure. Old Dominion was just recently finished at two hundred Ryan Drive. So that one's being done in a timely manner. And then Arrowhead Business Park, that was another old name that should be done well.
Are there any other known areas that require backup SSAs that are not on this list?
Yes, we're working on one for the Hampshire Woods subdivision. Um, there's some, you have to establish a, uh, property owners association to take primary responsibility of the maintenance of the detention retention bond and.
Which one's Hampshire Woods?
On the Ashroom.
Gaston Flanagan, like where Malcolm Meads is or all.
Like where Buckhead, Buckhead Beavs and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those, that one, then, uh, any developments that are coming forward, um, we'll, we'll work to make sure those SSAs are established, you know, as the projects are approved.
The Pet Egg facility is another one.
Pet Egg was actually approved. SSAs would be one.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Khan, are all the businesses aware or were they, you know, you predating you as well, were they aware of the? Mr. Connor, are all the businesses aware or were they, you know, you predating you as well, were they aware at the time? That they came forward with their developments and approvals that they were gonna have to do an SSA?
Well, the village has to do the, as a backup, as they say, they have the primary responsibility of maintenance.
Okay.
If they don't maintain the pond or the stormwater solution, then the village has the right to go and fix it and, uh, assess the tax.
So, but, so they knew that when they were coming in?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, this is kind of like a bracketed discussion, um, but we do have to have independent voice votes for roll call vote for each, uh, ordinance. Uh, does anyone have any other questions about any of these backup SSAs?
This is just a procedural question for Mr. Vasselli. Love when other government bodies tell us we have to vote on things. The village doesn't approve these.
Would be violation of Kane County Storm Order Ordinance.
Which is our own.
Right, which we adapt, right?
We would or the property owner?
We would.
We would. We have to oppose these, so.
The development itself would be a violation of those approvals that came through.
Um, so right now they're in violation. Without the assessment.
We are in.
We are.
I'll take. The, yeah, we, we are. I mean, let's just call it as it is. Yes, these should have been done before, okay? And we're getting them done. We are working on a bunch now, um, Mr. Hedges, Mr. Con, we're diligently to get these through. We're gonna get these through. We're gonna have some more coming through. And so, yes, are these tardy? No question, absolutely. Um, and we're not gonna let it happen again.
Right, sorry, my question wasn't whether they were tardy, but, and you answered it. It was just that. This is a rule or a ordinance imposed by Kane County that a local municipality has, or a law passed by Kane County.
Yeah.
That a local municipality has to vote yes for, or a majority yes, otherwise we're in. We're, uh, in violation of that law.
Uh, yeah, I guess. I guess a very good summation.
Does he go to jail if we go?
Does it, might go to jail if we don't?
This one way, you rid of me.
I've seen mayors go to jail before, but never for an SSA, we're gonna say that.
There's always a person.
Gonna go, that'd be a good way.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion approving.
Let me call Mr. Kelly to explain it to you.
I didn't approve the. I'm sorry. All right, um, so, uh, G, letter G, I'll entertain a motion approving an ordinance proposing a, uh, establishment of SSAs. Number thirty-two for Old Dominion. And setting a public hearing date, I'm sorry, and setting a public hearing date for June twenty-six, I'm treating that. Thanks. So we have first and second. Questions or comments? Can you call the roll slash voice vote?
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Motion pass six zero.
Next, I will entertain a motion for, uh, approving an ordinance proposing SSA number thirty-three for the McDonald's slash Road Ranger. Project and setting a hearing date for June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Questions and or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mrs. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Hi.
Motion pass six zero.
Uh, next, I will approve, uh, will entertain a motion approving an ordinance proposing SSAs number thirty-four for the Arrowhead Business Park. And setting a public hearing date for June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
So, okay, no. Second, there we go.
Questions, questions or comments? Can you call for the trustees' voices to be heard on this one, please?
Mrs. Paul Street.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Fodor.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Next, my second favorite part of the meeting, where we have staff reports, we have the police report. In all its glory, and these three reports. If you have any questions. Uh, since Mr. Garcia is new here, we will appoint, we will point off questions to Mr. Garcia tonight.
Uh, Chief Pan, just one question. Pretty big increase for traffic, um, just more people on the road or?
Not.
No, I. There's, the weather's popping more people per street.
The weather's definitely.
The weather's warmer, so the police were getting done.
Yeah, and we've also been doing, um, a, a lot of stops for, uh, truck enforcement lately.
We've had a lot trying to go down State Street.
As the weather turned, we, and we're actually, um, we're having partnered with, with Pingree on truck enforcement for a while too. Because they have a new truck enforcement officer, so they're gonna actually come over and learn from our guys and then we're gonna do a vice versa for a few days. I'll come up in this.
Do we get to like go undercover in their squad cars?
I, I, well, we'll all be in our own squad.
Is this primarily on State Street truck enforcement?
Um.
There's tons of it.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, truck, it's the truck stops, it's, um, lately, we, we have a directed assignment right now from Mel's and Harmony. Um, for bombers coming off of Mel's and then, um, and then, yeah, State and Allen up in that area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we use our camera as? Evidence that truckers are using this as a.
We could, yeah. The cameras we have now are not, uh, license plate cameras, so. No.
Okay.
We're gonna have to have a different kind.
And.
At the tollway, you have a license plate reader though, right? Huh? The, the tollway has a license plate reader, don't they?
Um.
At that entrance.
Not at the, no, I don't know. Forgive my trucker's lack of knowledge, when a truck wants to come down. Don't they get like a warning on their, or they know what a, what class?
Their GPS should show that it's not a truck.
Okay.
They're using that GPS.
Okay, so they're basically.
Well, keep in mind, there's two, this, boy, this is complicated too. You weren't able to get it.
It is complicated too.
They, they can come from either end as long as they're making a delivery.
They have to make a delivery though.
Yeah, they have. They should, yeah, if they drive straight through from Allen to State, then that's a violation.
That's a violation.
Unless they're agriculture or some of the other schools. Um, or a combine, just drive right down State Street.
Absolutely, that's why we have the lights up so high.
Right. So that's.
No, I understand.
Right now, I think they get the point. I mean, we've had a couple of trucks get down here, especially during some of our special events, and they just get stuck. And we have to escort them out of town and.
Yeah.
Actually, I escorted one the wrong way one time and Doug had to really get him out of town. Um, yeah, I, I think it's helped a lot downtown. I don't see nearly as many trucks.
But we do, but to your point, we, we still see them. I still see them. I always see them and I go, damn, where?
Yeah, it seems like there's a lot less after we redid the signage. Yeah, that helped a lot, the signage.
Okay, well, I'm glad it's improving and, cause yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes it doesn't feel like. It seems like I'm always following them. I go, man, I don't have a sign.
They're down here all day walking around State Street. It's, it's the interesting. Yes, the things going on.
Drive around with you and my passenger seat. Does anybody have any questions about streets?
I, I have another question for Chief, actually. Not bad at all. Um, so I just wanted to, to mention the mental health calls. Um, I think that six hundred percent should have been read as it increases so much.
Yeah.
Um, which I look at those right away. Um, those people that have the mental health calls, do we get them some kind of service? You know, or.
Um, it, it depends on the situation. I mean, most of the time when we're responding, if it's, if it's reported in that. Uh, it, it does involve a transport and it's not us transporting, it's the fire department transporting them. Um, so, yeah, you know, we, we get them, if, if they, if they need to go to the hospital, we'll get them to the hospital. Um, if we have repeat calls for service, um, for mental health, then we, we can also do referrals. Um, you know, to have someone come out to the house and we have a, a service through Kane County, um, can't think of the name right now. Um, but they, they'll come out from Elgin and, and actually interview you too. Um, so we, yeah, we do, we do get them.
Are they repeats or?
Some.
Some of them are, okay, that's, all right, that's one. Um, and then the three hundred percent increase in auto thefts.
Yes.
Um. We can talk about that or say where that's at.
Yeah, we can talk.
Yeah.
You can show your movie of it. Thanks to our camera. Go ahead.
Public may not know, since we don't have newspapers that really cover us.
A burglary to a local car dealership and, and, uh, and there were three cars stolen. And, you know, during that, during that night, burglary, it was about midnight. Um, we do believe that, I, you know, I can't, I, I guess I can't talk too much about the details far as follow-up on it, but there. We do believe it's a group out of Chicago that, um, you know, that, that has been hitting dealerships all over the region.
Okay, so no one's been charged.
But it wasn't like a high-tech crime type deal.
No, they, they, they busted a window, got in through it, opened the door, and all the keys are just hanging on the wall when you get inside.
Well, that was when the like.
No alarm, no cameras.
Can we talk about?
There are cameras, but they don't use them. They don't turn them on.
Can you tell us anything about the prevention measures that are being put in place or currently in place? Other than unlock keys and cameras hooked up?
I don't know if it's appropriate for us to talk about this.
Not yet.
No, no.
Well, we've just announced that you can just hit the window and the keys are right there, so.
Are we, are, um, are improvements being made? Can I?
Just say.
They're being addressed.
Yeah. Issues are being addressed.
I can't say for sure.
They've been strong.
I can see improvements have been discussed.
Okay, they've been strongly encouraged.
Okay. There was a very expensive vehicle in there that was disabled. That's what they were, we think they were asking.
Okay.
And they were not able to take that one, but you can see them coming up on our cameras. They pull up right to the stop sign one at a time, all three of them.
Only in the guy's stop.
Middle of State Street, the lead.
It was insane.
Yeah.
It looks like a parade.
Well, the reason, the reason why I just, I wanted to say that it wasn't, I would just say that it's not a high-tech crime, because that's what everybody keeps talking about. It's like, you know, that you have the garage door open or something get cloned. You know, now everybody's talking about the keys that don't have keys and they can get cloned by. Cars unlocking in your, in the parking lot and that kind of thing. You just, just know that it wasn't anything. So, like we tell everybody, lock up your stuff. It's no different than somebody having their car broken into quote unquote on the driveway by leaving the doors unlocked with all their stuff inside of it. And that happens as the weather gets warmer. It's gonna start happening again. And people are gonna get mad about it, but that's what happens is there are people that come out from other communities. And they come out to your door in your car and they, they open the door and they take what they can take and then they move on to your neighbors. It's just what happens. So lock the cars without.
I mean, where they are, are, we only have two cameras or do we have more than that?
We have, uh, three cameras on Village Hall and three on the library.
Okay.
Yeah, two, yeah.
Two locations, three, um.
Total of six camps.
Six camps.
Are any of them in view of being able to see whoever graffiti'd our building?
No, no, and that, I'm pretty sure that was done.
That was what, I'm sorry?
I think it's been up there for years.
I don't think, I don't think a few years, I, but, but we'll go with, we'll go, they've been, it's been there for a while. I know that, but I'm not saying a few years.
You really can't see, unless you walk around back and look up, then nobody ever do that, I don't think.
Yeah.
So you go around back, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, our building got tagged and we're gonna have that addressed.
Gotcha. Just a coat of paint, that'll work.
Uh, there's a little more work. It's brick.
Yeah, we have that part to search through.
It's, uh, it's pretty artistic. If you guys want to see the pictures, we'll share them. Pretty artistic. Anyway.
I would say best practice with graffiti is you evade it as soon as possible after, you know, after it's discovered, so. We're trying to bait it as quickly as we can.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, you get a tough pointer out.
So.
Can't do it in the rain.
But, uh, but if you're volunteering, you can go up there tomorrow.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to accounts payable. Thank you very much. Uh, it doesn't appear that we have accounts payable to staff today, so I will entertain a motion to table. The accounts payable personnel indefinitely.
Sorry.
Questions, comments? Call in favor?
Hi.
All right.
So, uh, I'll post, all right. Next, we have regular accounts payable amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Any questions? The fairly. I'll pack it this evening.
Um, page three.
Page three.
Page on valuation services for the appraisal. What was appraised?
The old.
The old.
Fifty, sixty bucks? Almost four hundred thousand, three, three eighty.
You're gonna be coming on that soon.
Next question then is on page four.
Page four.
Clark Baird and legal services. Is this a new? No.
Uh, Mr. Denham. That was in here for the personnel matter.
Okay, okay. I just don't remember that name, so, okay.
Any other questions?
Nobody wants to know about four dollars and sixty cents on page five at the very top of the page.
Page five.
I gotta talk about that. Four dollars and sixty cents. So it's, uh, it's a check made out to Coral Township, Road Bridge. So the village, um, as you know, annexed property into McHenry County. And, um, we receive an allocation of the road and bridge funds that are collected, um. In Coral Township based on the assessed valuation that the village has compared to all of McHenry County. So we get four dollars and sixty cents. However, we have no roads that touch any of the property, so we can't repair them. And state statute requires if we can't use the money, we must return it to the township. So every year, we're gonna write them a.
Did we, did we send them a check?
It's, it's going to be sent, yes.
Cause I can go deliver it myself. They were opposed to us annexing, so I can go knock on the.
I don't think you're gonna find anybody there because.
Well, they found.
We can't just go over there and throw a shovel full of coal pads in a puddle and just keep the money?
You can't, you can't leave, um, um, a voicemail message because it's full and they never are there whenever I try to call them. Cause I try to call them.
They don't like us anyway.
No.
It's okay.
Philofoya.
Make them, make them sign, make them sign for the check. Anyway, all right, any other questions? I'll entertain a vote, uh, a motion approving the accounts payable in the amount four twenty-seven, one eighty-six, three.
Go.
Sorry. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the voice roll, voice vote, whatever you want to call it now? Can't say that very fast.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mrs. Forders.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coth.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mrs. Paul Street.
Hi.
Village Board Committee reports, Mr. Kelly, this is Development Commission.
Uh, so I'd like to congratulate Mr. Pizzolato on being the chairman. He was our vice chair. He'll do a great job as chairman. And also welcome Mr. Garcia to the BDC. Um, and that means we still have one opening vacancy, so. I, if there's people out there that are interested watching this or board members that know people interested, just have them fill out an application. And Mr. Pizzolato, uh, will be, I believe, the person reviewing those before they go to President Reed. Uh, and we will meet the second Wednesday of May, six thirty. Fun. Uh, the last meeting, we talked about, um, updates to the Strategic Economic Development Plan that, um. At the time Chairman Kerjacki had presented to the board. Um, Mr. Khan presented status updates for many of the items. Um, it, I think it, it raises one thing just for us to keep in mind. I know we've talked about a comprehensive plan update and we've talked about, you know, a couple of different plans. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into these and then we don't really talk about them once they're done. And so it may be a good idea for us to figure out a, a regular cadence, whether it's. Biannually or annually, just to review these type of plans to say, how are they, where are they at? What's the progress being made? Otherwise, it brings into question the amount of work that goes into actually creating them. So uh, thank you, Mr. Khan, for going through and doing the updates on that. And uh, we do have interest in facade grant programs. We did talk about two potentially changing the program to put in a clause that uh states that when you apply for a project in a fiscal year, that if if you or for whatever reason are unable to finish that project within that fiscal year, you are at risk of not getting reimbursed per what was approved by the board. Because this past year, if you remember, we had to approve carryover. This year in this budget doesn't approve any carryover. So anything that wasn't paid out this year that gets paid out into the next fiscal year is going to come out of that fifty K and reduce the number of people that can be served by this. Excuse me, so that was one thing that we did talk about at the BDC. There wasn't a resolution or a recommendation, but it was talked about that we need to figure out a way it's not saying you have to apply by a certain time, but maybe have a clause in there that says you understand and agree that that if it's not complete by the end of the fiscal year, you may not get reimbursed because the funds are open within that fiscal year. Now, is there anything else that I'm missing from that meeting?
Um, we had talked about becoming more proactive and reaching out to businesses, developers, especially with some about seventy-two thousand kind of long-term project.
Yep. There, there is going to be an application that comes forth. Actually, there were two recommendations, but they're coming forth after the new fiscal year.
Yeah, they come out in May.
So May first meeting, they should be here. So we did discuss two BDC program or applications. Sorry, facade. Well, we discussed two, but there's one official one that we make a recommendation on. When we discussed it in the May first, the one thing I want to say is that um this is the first time I've seen an application where multiple property owners came together to submit one application and they all agreed to it and they all signed off on it. And they all feel it's a good idea and it's really a pretty small application. But I mean, it wasn't just like one business saying, I want to do something. These were people working together to say, we want to bring back some of the old look that was downtown, so. It was really kind of inspiring and uh, Mr. Swalwell worked his butt off to get some of these and have lots of conversations with people. So you'll see that in the May first.
Okay. Thank you. Any new business?
And nothing to report from Budget Committee.
No. Yeah, we're not on the agenda.
Yeah.
I do have a question for Mr. Paulson.
Okay.
How's Lane Western doing? What are well, Paul?
Uh, they should be almost.
Should be almost.
Uh, with the, with the report, I I forgot to check in with Steve before the meeting, so. Um, I believe he's trying to schedule a meeting with Mark and his staff to go over it.
Is that something that uh you can, once you um find out, you could email Mr. Hedges and he can let the rest of the board? I'll check with Mark. Thank you. It'll be next week. They they have a meeting scheduled for the end of next week over there at the shop where they're going to start looking into it.
Thank you, Jay.
Sure. All right. Um, I only have a few, couple of things. I want to thank uh Chief Pan and Chief Herman for uh participating in the Coffee with the Chiefs. It was a really informative conversation that we had on Saturday morning. Uh, you guys uh all missed out on a good time. Uh, as it did most people, um, but it, but the people that did come, we got to learn a lot about um, some of the initiatives that Chief doesn't really get to talk about. So I thought that was pretty cool about the you just can briefly, you talk a little bit about the the chaplain conversation that you that you've had with the event that you've got coming up? Actually, that that's one of a few um events that we're doing for some regional training um to really to train, to provide training for not only people within our department, um, but but also just in the region and and um, so we have a there's a local provider um that has a, has quite an impressive resume at a national level. Um and he um, he's written some curriculum over the years for crisis. It's called um Critical Incident Stress Management or CISM. This is a certification for um anybody that responds in a caretaker, not a caretaker role, a care providing role like a, like a chaplain or peer support to a critical incident, um, whether that's, you know, something like an officer-involved shooting or uh, uh, it's a male town seat now. Um. And uh, so we are going to partner with him um, and and um, provide a tr- we're we're hosting the training. It's going to be a regional training for Critical Incident Stress Management and he's going to, he's going to um, give uh one of his, one of the core curriculum courses for the CISM program. That's a certification um, that that is well sought after all throughout the country. So and we're going to host it here. Um, it's going to be held at though at Church on the Rock, which is in Huntley, but it's right across the road from the village, not just down the road, so. Um, so that's one opportunity. And then we're also doing um several uh courses in the next few weeks with um, with other agencies that are actually coming here for training. Um, the first coming up is um highest traffic stops. And um, so we're going to be, we're going to be teaching all of our officers plus um, officers from Canton Hills and Pingree and Gilberts are all coming here for their training. Um, and then um, the the last one that I can think of off the top of my head is uh this summer, we're going to do another round of our active shooter uh scenario training